Evening Nigerians in Europe. You're welcome again to our Shengen Story Media Virtual Town Hall Meeting. It's called Virtual Town Hall Meeting because we are all working with the situation on ground. We are all connecting from different angles, different locations in Europe. The sub-team for today is one-on-one with our honourable newly-elected chairman of Naido. And that is the person of Dr Bashir Obashikola. Dr Bashir Obashikola was elected to lead Nigerians, carry Nigerians through Nigerians in Europe. And this is an honour for us to have him in this platform. It's a great honour. We are happy to have you, Dr Bashir. I'm going to open your mic. Yes, it's open. So that you can introduce yourself better and also say something before we begin.
Alright, thank you very much. Good evening everyone or good, you know, I don't know wherever you are watching from. You know, good day. Dr Bashir Obashikola has been introduced. I'm the newly-elected chairman of Naido Europe. Of course, I know many people know Naido Europe, Naido generally and Naido Europe in particular. This Nigerians in Daspura Organisation is an organisation that was, you know, established in 2000. And since then, it has been existing in different locations of the world. It's a network of Nigerians all over the world. And as an umbrella organisation for Nigerians in Daspura, you know, for the purpose of, you know, unity. And has in, you know, national development in Nigeria.
Great, thank you very much. So, doctor, there are three platforms that are open. So I need you to know so that you can understand all the, what we are doing tonight. It's not, it's a serious thing. The YouTube channel is open, our Facebook channel is open. And two organisations in Nigeria are also connected. So we've called it one-on-one with you. There are panelists, we are still waiting for some of them. There are panelists that will be putting up questions with respect to your office. And hopefully Nigerians in Europe are all listening. So you're welcome once again, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Yes, with us here, before I go further, I'm seeing some notable people. Is first of all, my partner from my, the Shengen Story Coordinator in France. And that's Mr Tuma. Mr Tuma, could you please, yes, that's Mr Tuma from France, Paris. And we also have, I'm seeing Mr Ignatus, Mr Ignatus from Rome, a lawyer from Rome. Mr Ignatus, can you open up please? A legal advisor from Rome. You cannot unmute your phone. Also is the Nigerian Association President in Italy. And that's the Honourable Sam Hodge is also here with us. Questions will be opened to the individuals that are here. And questions also will be opened to the YouTube followers. But we have the panelists that are actually going to be asking questions directly. And one of them again is, which has just come in, that's our great friend Katera, Katera, Katera and Manger, UK. That's Mazie Azun. Mazie Azun, can you open up and say something? Mazie Azun from the UK is here.
Yeah, good evening everyone. It's my great pleasure being with you this evening. Greetings from the United Kingdom.
Thank you.
We are just escaping our second lockdown. And hopefully we're going to have a wonderful white Christmas. I wish you all the best this evening.
Thank you very much Mazie. Thank you, sir. So on our YouTube followers now, we have 25 people waiting to hear and to put their own questions too. So I begin with myself. First of all, my name is Mark Godwin. You are joined, I'm the, we publish the magazine called Shengen Story Magazine. We also dish out news and related articles on issues bordering on Nigerians in Europe. Nigerians in Europe. Our goal is to also put the Nigerian community in a positive light. Like doctor and I were saying some time ago, we've had a lot of damaged image. We've had too many wrong notions, stereotypes, negative stereotype about Nigerians in Europe. So we are here also to change some of those stereotypes, some of those ill statements and ideas and things people have about us. So hopefully we're on that course and we will make it with your support also, all of you here. So doctor, I want to begin with the very first question here, sir. It says, what is your main goal as to move Naido to the next level? As the new president, as the new chairman, what is your goal? What is the main goal? To move Naido to the next level. Alright, doctor.
Yeah, thank you very much. Naido have been in, as I said, like I mentioned, for almost 20 years now, or thereabout. And there have been different, you know, attempts at, you know, expanding its scope. And establishing it as a real organisation that would actually, you know, be very useful to both Nigerians who are in Daspura. And also to Nigerian government or Nigeria as a nation, you know. And that had been the direction that the organisation had been going. For several, of course, different leadership has come and gone and everybody has contributed their bits into that, you know, direction. So the main goal now is to build on what has been done. And also go forward into the new era of bringing in new generation of Nigerians. If you can notice that the youth has recently been agitating. And the reason why they are agitating is because they want to be part and parcel of not only implementing policies. But also be part of policymaker. And that has been, that's one of my goals, that the youth will be brought in, you know, into Naido more. Apart from that, we also intend to bring in second generation Nigerians. If you can, you know, most of us, we are already above, you know, you know, 40, 50s and 60s of the first, first generation of Nigerians. But there are children, you know, these people also have children, they are, they give back to Nigerians or people of miscolour. Or fully Nigerian, but also we have to be brought in, they have to know their roots. Just like the Irish, you know, the Americans who claim to be Irish, they are not actually born in Ireland. But because their generation came from Ireland and they still claim loyalty to that country. And I think this is one of the goals that we also put, you know, in front of ourselves. To bring in second generation Nigerians into Naido as an organisation. Then apart from that, we also need, you know, to establish ourselves as a real organisation that is all-inclusive. What do I mean by that? You know, I know there are numerous organisations, you know, you call it about local organisation, tribal organisations, professional organisations. Naido is meant, actually was created, you know, by government initiative in 2002. Actually be an umbrella organisation for all these, you know, multiple organisations. And we want to establish ourselves in that platform also by bringing in more organisations as corporate members. Or individual member, just the way we have it now. But we want to escalate more the corporate membership of Naido. So that people will feel inclusive. Because there are people who by virtue of their activities or their loyalty or their, you know, professionalism might feel out of Naido. So we want to make sure that people feel, you know, involved. And that will be one of our, you know, direction that we want to also face. Of course, that's also include, you know, what I talk about, the football, the sports people. You know, Nigeria is known for, you know, a lot of footballers, a lot of professionals in different fields of sports. They are our icon, you know, because when you mention Nigeria, the people ask, oh, do you know, do you know, do you know? People, you know, they attach our name to certain people. So and I think we have to leverage on that also by bringing those professionals, Nigerian professionals who are in Europe. To be part and parcel of our organisation. And so those are the areas and I think when we do that, that we also strengthen the organisation to, you know, carry out the form, the rule, the goal. That the organisation was meant to meet. So that, those are the areas that we want to concentrate on for the next two years.
Yes, sir, that's a very good opening. There's a question from YouTube I want to take, I want to send to you. Then I'll open for the panelists to also put their questions. He says, how can Naido reach the grassroots? That's from a person called Akintola from the YouTube.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, how can we reach the, you know, the grassroots? Just like I mentioned earlier, there are a lot of people who by virtue of their status or by virtue of their perception. Feel that they cannot belong to certain, but they eventually belong to certain other organisations. So we want to either directly they get involved or we get to them. Or indirectly through the organisation, through the organisation they belong to. So that is one of the reasons I was mentioning that we want to, you know, strengthen that corporate membership of Naido. So that people will get representation either directly by being involved as members or indirectly. You know that in Europe, we have Naido chapters all over Europe. And we want people to directly link up with their chapters. So that they can get involved in member, in their, you know, either as members individually or as corporate members through the organisations. So these are the areas we want to reach out to people at the grassroots.
Please, one more question from YouTube, then we go further. He said, how can Naido create business platform? Somebody is saying this from the YouTube corner. How can Naido create business platform?
Okay, well, one of the, yeah, one of the goals of the mission of Naido, like I mentioned, is, you know, the national development. And that is done through investment, driving of investment. So business is part and parcel of Naido's goal. So we have been doing that. We directly, you know, get involved in promoting businesses. For example, we organise a business seminar, business, you know, missions, investment, you know, visit to Nigeria. You know, we ask people's businesses by getting them, you know, informed about what is applied in Nigeria. For example, all the policies on ease of doing business, probably many people might be hearing about that. You know, we also leverage on our connection, the recognition that the government gives us as an organisation, as an umbrella organisation for Daspuras. To reach out, you know, to people to be able to enhance their businesses in, you know, in getting touch with Nigeria. Of course, we also create committees of different, you know, think tank committees that who also help in professional. Or bringing of businesses, business ideas. So if you have business ideas, you can, you know, feel free to, you know, get involved. That through the central body which I represent as the chairman or through the local chapters, which is more closer to you. So let your business be known, you know, it's one of the things we want to also promote. Let, because we know, we need to know ourselves, you know, because all these Europeans, they promote their businesses, either local or internationally. Because they know each other, they promote them. So we need to promote ourselves. So that people will know, for example, if you are in Italy, what, what is your, what is the business you do? What is the name of your business? If you are in Russia, what, what business do you do? And what is the name, you know, how can we promote you? How can we let people know about you? So these are the things we want, you know, to also make sure we strongly push in Naido.
Thank you very much, sir. Obviously, everybody here will admit and you admit with me, Honourable Chairman. That there is a realisation in Nigerians in Daspura. And something is about to happen. People are eager also to see a change in our country. People are eager to get into that change too. People are bringing ideas and so many things are going on. So with that, I'm going to keep that as a statement and open up to my panelists. Honourable Tuma, yes, go ahead. You can open up.
One question, doctor.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's a pleasure having you on board. I've been looking forward to this. Now, I want to shorten my question. But first, let me highlight a little thing. If we go around, like you said, Nigerians, we have a lot of. How do I put it? We have been associated with a lot of bad things and some things that we don't even do. But once you're black, you're a Nigerian. Many of us do, a lot of has been achieving so many great things. We achieve so many great things, but nobody mentions them. They only look at the bad parts. Trying to always paint us negative. Though, before I go further, that is why Shengen Story Magazine is here. We highlight the positive sides of Nigerians. Today, we have a Nigerian that has helped to develop the vaccine. That is going to be used to eradicate Covid. Dr Niema Obuago. But the news is silent about them. They just make one statement about them and they keep calm. We have Adewale Adeyomi, who has been appointed by Biden to be a deputy in Treasury. Which goes to show you that there's no way you want Nigerians, that you will never get them. If you calculate from Clinton coming down, there's never been any administration that comes in, doesn't have a Nigerian in their cabinet. Now, I move to my question. Naido was formed in 2000. And just some months ago, we are hearing need come. So I am confused. What are your moves or plans to tackle our need come? Or to make sure that need come does not really get Naido to the background? Because from my own understanding, Naido stands for those who are in the warfront, experiencing the heat. Living with the heat and also strategising to overcome. That is those who are living outside. But need come happens to be majority those in Nigeria who have lived abroad or who felt they have visited abroad. And who are also using this to communicate. And then the minister portfolio that is handling this is supposed to be working with Naido. So please, let me know the difference between need come and Naido. And then let me also know the relevance of need come into Naido. And then how you need, how you're going to, you know, make Naido what is supposed to be. So that it will not be related to the background. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate, you know, the way you went about the question. It's a very good thing because you actually build the background for it. Well, let me first of all clarify, I think there is a misconception there. In many countries, let me start from general view. In many countries, government always establishes an agency. Before establishing all that sort of agencies, all, all the, all the things that the agency is supposed to do. What am I talking about? I told you Naido was, you know, was, you know, conceptualised in 2000. When Olivier Gobassan, the former president, was going about the world after the, the Abacha regime. A lot of Nigeria were all over the world. And he discovered that anywhere he goes, about five, 10, 20 organisations will come to him as if they are representing Nigeria. So he was, he was saying, oh, there should be an umbrella organisation for all this. And that's how the idea of Naido came into being. And meanwhile, in Nigeria itself, there was no agency that was in charge, that was supposed to, to push that idea of, of Daspura policy. So what happened was that Daspura organisation was established outside the country. Meanwhile, there was no agency in Nigeria to, to actually anchor anything the Daspuras are doing. So that is the reason why Needcom was formed. So Needcom is a government agency to coordinate the affairs of the Daspuras organisation outside the country. And that is the purpose. So it's in the government agency. It doesn't have anything to do with Naido in terms of, in terms of a parallel. It's not a parallel organisation, but one complements the other. For example, if we go to Nigeria as an organisation, we are not there just the way you describe it. We are outside the country. When we go there, we need, we need an agency that will help us to harness anything we bring into Nigeria. They know who to contact, they know where to go and all those stuff. That is the work Needcom is supposed to do. So it is an extension of the Daspura organisation, which was established earlier in, in, outside the country. So that is the difference. So one is government agency, the other one which is Naido is private and individual driven organisation. We don't receive any money from Nigeria. We are Naido. We establish ourselves by ourselves with our own resources, we'll be sustaining. Of course, at initial stage in 2000, President Olivier Gobassan gave us what we call seed, seed money. Which was used for legal and all those expenses to register the organisation. But at the end, after that, we are sustaining the organisation by ourselves all over the world. So there is no, this thing, there is no fight there. But the issue remains that we need each other. Needcom and Naido need each other. We need to walk through with them so that they can help us do what we want to do in Nigeria. We cannot go to Nigeria to do something and you waste your time running from one agency of government to another. But Needcom is there to coordinate, to make sure that whatever we bring, they quickly, you know, join us together. To make sure that those things are realised. So that is the, that is the correlation or the collaboration that is supposed to be there.
As to the. Hold on, let me, let me, let me, let me take a little bit there. Yes. Are you trying to tell me that you, you were aware of the formation of Needcom? You were invited and you are in current with them?
Yes, we, Needcom was established through our own struggle also. Naido asked for it. So it, yeah, so it was not done to, to set us aside, but it was done through our own request. We requested for such an agency. In some countries, they call it Ministry of Daspura Affairs. In some countries, they call it Commission, just like the way we call it Commission. So it is all new. In every country, they have an agency that is in charge of Daspura Affairs. So Needcom is, is that government agency that is in charge of Daspura Affairs. Why Naido is an organisation outside the country that enhances Nigerian resources financially and human. Towards development of Nigeria. So one complements the other. Why, the other one, a side of the question which you asked is, how do we make sure that Needcom does not push us aside? If you read the act that established Needcom, Naido was mentioned in that act as an organisation. With which Needcom supposed to work. And we also constitute part of the, of the board of Needcom. Yes, currently that board is not established yet. The person or the legal person that the act said could, you know, had the right to establish that board. Is the president of the country. So President Wabari Buri is the one in charge of establishing a board for Needcom. So currently, that is the struggle we have. Probably you have been hearing that there is some, you know, misunderstanding between Needcom and Naido. It is on that issue, the issue of, of the establishment of the board. Because Naido by the act supposed to, you know, nominate candidates to those, to that platform of the board. So we are waiting for the president to actually give us, you know, to request, I'd rather, to request us to submit names. Of candidates for those, for, for the, for the board. And of course, there will be misunderstanding between the current leadership of Needcom. You know, and the former leadership of Naido on this issue. Because it seems we, we, there was a misunderstanding that, you know, it was a misunderstanding as if we are putting pressure on the person that we suppose not to put pressure. That is the, the leadership of Needcom is not in charge of establishing board. You know, our role is to work with any board that is established. But she is not the one to establish that board. So I have come, my own approach has been this, that by the act, the person that we're supposed to put pressure on is the president of the country. So we are going to be doing that while we will be working with Needcom to do other things. Because apart from being on the board, Naido has other roles to play in Needcom. So we should not shy away from that. And that is my position, which is a bit different from the former leadership. Other than that, there is no, you know, we have, we believe that Naido, it has the right to be part and parcel of Needcom. But and that is, we are going to continue with that. But the only thing is, who do we push? Who do we pull? And we have discovered that we're supposed to be talking to the president rather than the leadership of Needcom on that issue. So that is the difference.
Thank you very much, Chairman. That, that's clear and that's direct. Thank you very much. Before we go ahead, I want to appreciate the presence of some real notable powerhouse. Our correspondent from Germany, that's Honourable Victor. Comrade Victor, you can open up. Also, I want to appreciate the presence of comrade Frederick, comrade Frederick Oderinga. Am I correct? You're welcome, sir. Comrade Frederick, you can open your mic too. Okay, go ahead, Victor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes.
It's nice to be with you once again. I'm sorry for joining you late. I've been struggling with the connection here, you know, I'm still in Nigeria. So you know what it's like communicating from here. So I'm really sorry about that anyway. There's a question I actually wanted to ask the, the leadership of Naido. I heard it say something about Needcom, you know, I didn't know when the Naido organisation got broken into two. I don't really know what it stands for. Can you please explain to me? Because I'm just joining. Like I said, I didn't understand the details of that word Needcom. So I don't know what it stands for.
Okay, well, if I might just say, you know, of course, I started from there actually, probably because you joined me, you said that. It is a, Needcom is Nigeria and Daspura Commission. It's a government agency in Nigeria in charge of Daspura Affairs. Anything that has to do with Daspura Affairs in Nigeria is, you know, being handled by Needcom. It's a government agency. So it's all a private agency. Whereas Naido, like I said, is Nigeria and Daspura organisation. Which is, you know, so that is the difference. One is commission, which is government, the other one is organisation which is private.
Thank you very much. So.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
You have more questions, Honourable Victor? Okay, we come to, yes, we come to our great friend Mazie Azun. Are you there? I also want to recognise the presence of some elders in our midst. There is an elder from Italy, Sima, is the president of Nigerian community in Angkona. Mr Sima, you're welcome. I also want to recognise the presence of Frederick, Frederick, comrade Frederick, you can open your phone, sir.
I greet you, sir. I greet you.
You're welcome. We appreciate your stopping by.
Thank you.
Yes, so we have lots of questions from the YouTube corner. But I want to give the guests here the opportunity to put one question to the Honourable Chairman of Naido. One question from each guest here, then we go with the YouTube questions later. So Honourable Frederick, go ahead. You want to say anything to our chairman?
Is there any? I just want to, I just want to congratulate our chairman once again. And I really appreciate the fluency with which he's discussing with us. And I am very optimistic that with a new beginning, we are going to have new ideas. And we are going to work together with him tirelessly. I'm very optimistic that in this tenure, we're going to have a, a Naidcom Commission. Where Naido is properly represented. A NITCOM Commission where Naido is properly represented. And I also believe that since he has already realized that the formation of the board. Is supposed to come from Mr. President, I trust that he will begin to make efforts. Towards directing energies to the presidency. And I believe also that the person that we should be talking to. Through the, towards the presidency should be the Minister of Justice and Attorney General of the Federation. Abu Bakar Malami, who should be able to tell the president that look by law, by law. We ought to have had a a a NITCOM Commission and the time is is long overdue. I wish our chairman a very happy, prosperous state in office. And I look forward to. A NITCOM where we shall begin to cooperate more and be more friendly to ourselves. And bring new ideas on board because I believe strongly that the freedom of Nigeria. Lies lies in the hands of Nigerians in diaspora. I also expect that God, by God's grace, twenty twenty-three, Nigerians in diaspora should be able to vote. Because we are approximately seventeen million persons. Seventeen million is more than the number of votes that brought. President Buri into office. May God bless each and every one of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you are doing a great thing, Honorable Frederick. Thank you for all you're doing to put Nigeria in a positive light. Thank you for all the awareness program. I see things you do on YouTube, on Facebook, and you're you're doing great. Thank you very much.
Sorry, if I may make one or two corrections to.
Yes, sir.
And also to support my able chairman. But just one correction to what my good friend and brother Frederick just mentioned now. Inasmuch as we are at the board level of NIDO Europe. Happy with the new executive and the new spirit of our new able chairman. Working together to lead NIDO to the next positive. Stage of its lifespan. One thing I want to say is that, yeah, it's a NITCOM. Is a baby of needle. And based on that fact that most of us in NIDO fought for. The actual legislation of NITCOM, bringing it into an act. That was, that led to its final formation a year plus ago. What I'm trying to clear here is, like my chairman said. The formation of the board of NITCOM resides on the hands of the president. But the the issue of trying to approach the presidency. Through the Minister of Justice for that purpose would be like also. Fixing a square pad in a round hole. Because before the formation of NITCOM. The contact relationship between NIDO and the government of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Was through the special advisor to the president on diaspora affairs, which was domiciled under the presidency. Which was then headed by the by Honorable Atticadbury. But then, after the formation, after the 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 assigning of NITCOM. Into a commission established by the Act two thousand and eighteen. The commission was domiciled under the Act, under the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. So NITCOM is an agency functioning under the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. With the Minister of Foreign Affairs as the supervising minister. So it would be an an act of disregard and dishonor. When you are asking for something and you 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 underpass the supervising minister. Of that particular ministry to go and ask for the request through a ministry that has nothing to do with the commission. In terms of the establishing act of that commission. So I think we need to get it right, inasmuch as we want to get things properly. The best approach, getting to the presidency either directly. Or getting to the presidency through the supervising minister of that commission, making our request known. So it's very important we don't mix everything. I think that was a, this has been a misconception along the line. But then, I have always maintained the fact that we should understand the administrative protocols. And administrative processes in Nigerian system. Once you underpass certain stages of that processes. You kind of create a limit in governance, a limit in political decision making. And people don't take it slightly when you step on their toes because of what you are looking for. So we need to be right. The way we go about it and follow the process of the establishing legislation. That brought about NITCOM and the ministry under which it functioned. Just like from the initial stage in two thousand. The essence of NIDO is to create a bridging gap between diaspora and the federal government. Just like you have local associations of Nigerians bridging the gap between Nigerians and the embassies in various countries. NIDO is said to be the gap, the bridging gap between Nigerians in diaspora and the federal government. And so. The 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 establishing act of NITCOM made it necessary that the commission should be domiciled. Instead of being under the presidency, be domiciled under the Federal Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Because it deals with diplomacy between Nigerians in the diaspora and the government of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. So that's why the minister is very important in this issue. And it seems like most times he has been underpassed. Or underestimated his his functions or his role in supervising that commission. So I think we can get it right there from you. That's my take from now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You're you're one of the panelists. So still be there. Honorable Chairman, we are sorry. You have to still be, there are lots of questions from the YouTube's corner. And we have some noble men here also raising up their hand. Mister Samson Hodge, go ahead, sir. That's the president of Nigerian Association in Italy. Yes.
Good evening viewers and good evening to the chairman of Naido. Once again, let me congratulate you on this letter of authority and flag of investiture. Good evening, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Kabashere.
Thank you so much.
I've always told them that there is something about you. In spite of when you have this Abraham Lincoln spirit, you try, you fail. You don't give up, you try again. You try and try. Now you are victorious. It surely shows that you were coming at the right time. Congratulations once again. And I I I salute your tenacity. I salute your steadfastness and being consistent on that place because it only shows that you have something. To come and impact on the people even when the time is short. I know all these things cannot be done alone. It will done with a team. I'm told that today we are one on one, but it appears that. You guys are even taking the chairman's, some of you are answering the question. Of course, I know you're part of the team. All these things are efforts made to us to see that Naido progresses. And again, to also take his position in NITCOM as it were. So the chairman, I'm only appealing, my 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 take will not be mostly in question, but to hear your take on that. Inasmuch as every time we are talking about, I hear people saying about image laundry. It's not surprising if you look at it sometimes, the image deficit we suffer. Is it that it is caused directly by us or indirectly because of the politics and what we represent in the world stage? I want to ask how you want to, because let me say whether we are mentioning. Establishing the board in NIDO, NITCOM, or going to this supervisory minister. Attorney General, all these things are politics being played in Nigeria. And let us not deny that. Whether you apply to the resource supervisory minister, if he does, he wants to play the policy, already they are playing the politics. Atticadbury and the foreign affairs are playing the politics already, I know. Not quite too long. There were some issues at the, with the Minister of Communication and the Digital Economy. I don't want to get into that. My is to know from the chairman. How do you intend to navigate through this politics, especially where you think. Maybe some people who bring in their personal ego into the services they are mandated to do. Using your lobbyist approach, or rather you feel that is, we are continuing to. Intervene writing and shout because we must keep on shouting, especially where the. Oderegi mentioned our diaspora voting, which is at the front burner. Twenty twenty-three is approaching and it's a year that we need to put in more effort to make sure that. Attention is given to us. So how do you intend to re-navigate, playing the politics they play? Because there is a lot of politics and we need to play it together. I think I will stop at that now.
Thank you very much. That's a good question. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Well, of course, you rightly said that, of course, there is, you know, that there are ministries. That are agencies assigned to do or carry out certain functions. I'm happy that Azu made a correction. That of course, there is a supervisory ministry, which is the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Of course, when I said the presidency. Of course, the representative of presidency in that policy is the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. So we're going to also go through him. And also, you know, because he's the one that we eventually be, you know, contacted. In terms of, you know, what they have to do in in making sure that the board is constituted. We're going to use that also. Of course, no, but probably the previous pressure and lobbying. You know, also extended to him so that he will also feel that it needs to be part of, parcel of this issue. As to the issue of how do I pay the parties? Where you know that in Nigeria, most of the the board are also. Being politicized, that is, the people that are nominated to, in, I'm not, I don't, I'm not talking about NITCOM now alone. I mean, the board of all the parasisters in Nigeria are mostly being occupied by people from. That has political leaning. You know, it is rare to, even when you say you are a professional. You know, I know people say, oh, no, I'm I'm not the politician, I'm a professional here. But at the end of the day, you are, you will be forced to join. The ruling class, the ruling party, the ruling party. And I think that's, I know. Honorable Oyama, the foreign ministry, was in diaspora, he was living in Switzerland. But he was also drawn home, but when he got to, probably he wasn't to play that, oh, I'm not a politician, I'm a professional here. But at the end of the day, he has to join APC. So these are, those are the things that happen in Nigeria. So most of the people are involved. Party leaning, there are policies to play also. And I don't rule it out that also in NITCOM. At the end of the day, some people, even if they are from diaspora, they will also look at their political leaning. So we have to, that's why I say, we need to know what we are doing ourselves, within ourselves, we need to know what. Who are who do we recommend for that that position? When we go to list the candidates out, we need to take certain things into consideration when we are doing that. So, but meanwhile, it's still open. We will play our policies without being partisan, because the problem is that you can, politics is a human being's nature. But if you play politics, if you are partisan, that is, you are supporting a particular political party, it is then people will see you as enemy. Oh, okay, you are PDP, oh, this is APC, I'm against you. Oh, I'm PDP, this is your APC, I'm against you. So that thing will play out. But if we play beyond that, that we see politics as. Pursuance of good governance, which does not, which goes across all parties. Then we will be at the at the upper head. So that's what I want to recommend for our diaspora. We should play our politics beyond partisanship. You know, especially if you are not in Nigeria where you want to play the real politics or, you know, incline yourself to a particular party. But you can play politics, politics is natural, is human beings', you know, nature to play politics. But not being partisan is your choice. So you might not play partisanship. And still play politics. So we're going to leverage on not being partisan, but be political in our approaches to issues concerning Nigeria. That's about that. Or the issue about diaspora voting. Unfortunately, Nigeria is lagging behind in this venture. Some other African countries have been doing, they are doing it, even that are not as strong as Nigeria. But the problem with Nigeria has always been that initially we don't have a reliable data. Of Nigerians who are actually outside the country. Because don't forget that when we say Nigerians in diaspora, anybody beyond the border of Nigeria is already in diaspora. So if you want to count how many Nigerians are in Africa, other African countries or neighboring countries even. For example, Republic of Benin, Niger, Chad, Cameroon, you know, you'll be overwhelmed. So we must be careful that when we are pushing for this, we also understand that there are delicate issues, which is the issue of data. And that is have been the reason why we support this new policy of data management now by the NIMC. That they want to capture actual Nigerians who are outside the country. Yes, for people might say, well, after all, we have passports. Yes, we have passport, but not all Nigeria who claim to be Nigerians are having Nigerian passports again. Some of them were forced to leave it because of they have naturalized or that, but they still claim Nigeria. So if you want to claim Nigeria, then there must be something that attaches you to Nigeria. So that means that that data collection. Is not, is not, is not a nonsense thing, is very necessary. So that will combine all of us into a database and we're able to push for a real. Diaspora voting that will not undermine the sovereignty of Nigeria as a country. So those are the political and very professional approach that we need to, you know, take into this. We will support the government to get data for diaspora, we push for the right for us to to vote. There has been another issue which is absent voting. That is, if you are registered in Nigeria, for example, a lot of Nigeria have voter card in Nigeria, who are diaspora, but they have voter card. Such people should be allowed to vote in outside the country. So that is the first step. Absent voting, you know, we have such a vote where you can vote because you have already a registered vote, a registered card in Nigeria. That should be implemented. That is the first thing we should be pushing for. That is people who have the registered vote, they could be able to register. And vote at the embassies, at the acquisition center. Then the second one is those one that will be captured by the new registration. Of data for diaspora. That's the one we have to push it because if we have to get the two together. That is the reason why we are not being able to do it. We need to break it into stages. So that when we are pushing for one, the second one is already ready, it's already getting ready. So that is where all of us. At the end of the day, it might not be twenty twenty-three in terms of getting all the seventeen million to vote. But at least let's start from somewhere so that as time goes on, we'll be establishing and expanding on what we have. So I want to encourage that they should do that absentee voting first so that people can vote. And get themselves into, you know, the database of Nigerians outside the country. So we are pushing for it and I think we're not going to relent in that.
Thank you very much, Chairman. There are so many questions. Maybe we might bring in the chairman another time. Because I I can't without all the questions that are bringing here. But before we go ahead, there are still more noble. Nigerians all over the Europe coming in. With us is an elder state man, Ruti Me Ottenia from Denmark. You're welcome, sir. That's my big brother. We also have here Fidel Wilson, the Naido executive. We also have more people joining. So there's a question to the vote. Somebody said. Can cyber voting work for Nigerians in diaspora? Can cyber voting work for Nigerians in diaspora? That's a YouTube question.
Yeah, I think, of course, they call it either cyber voting or online voting, you know, internet voting, so it is the same. It is part of what we just made, what I just explained. First of all, we need to get our database correct. For example, those people that I mentioned that already have the registered voter card in Nigeria. Such people can use online voting easily, you know, without any more, you know, it's just for the government to decide. it's just for the government to decide and get the appropriate laws to make sure that online voting is acceptable. You know, for certain, maybe not all, not all elections, but for certain elections, they should be allowed to vote. Especially, I think what all of us bothered about is the presidential election. You know, and I think that is what, you know, diasporas are more interested in. Uh, even though, of course, I would have love a situation where we proven, uh, have influence in our local, uh, local government elections. So, uh, but I know major, majority of people are looking at the president election as the main target or why we should, you know, participate. But other than that, I think all of us should be able to vote, have the ability to vote uh, outside the country and, uh, you know, get the, the appropriate, you know, electoral act that will allow online voting for certain, uh, you know, people who are not able to come out to polling votes.
Thank you very much, sir. So, um, I'm opening also to the guest here. Um, on Mr. Ottenia, elder state man, if you have questions, uh, I can permit one. There's a hand here from Victor, comrade Victor from Germany. Go ahead. On, 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 on mute your mic. And there's still more questions. Okay. On mute your mic, Victor.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, can you hear me now, please?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, basically, my question is almost addressed because, um, you know, as diasporans, the government recognizes that financially we are forced to be reckoned with. You know, if you look at what Nigerians sent home, um, daily from abroad, and I mean, Nigerians abroad sent home. Um, is basically helping to power the economy of Nigeria. Uh, but it's not reflecting on our ability to, you know, to vote. So that was the question I was going to put to the, to the chairman.
Yes.
You know, that, uh, what is it going to, uh, do as regards, you know, helping to ensure that the diasporans are able to vote um, in the, either in the next coming election or in the nearest practical, uh, pr- uh, practical time or, yeah, as soon as possible, as soon as practi- uh, practicable, so to say. Uh, he already addressed part of the question anyway.
Okay, it's okay. So, um, yes, there are more hand, honorable Frederick. On mute yourself and go ahead. On mute your mic.
Yes. I wanted to, thank you. I want, I just want to say that now that there is a review or an attrition of the Nigerian constitution that is ongoing at the National Assembly, this is a very important time for us to kick into it as Naido worldwide. And in came into it, we should be able to make them to put in the law that will enable Nigerians in diaspora to vote. It has to be there. This is the time we have to follow up. And another thing we should do is we can kill, um, um, two birds with one stone. Apart from asking them to make sure that we vote, we should also, at the same time, fight for legislative offices exclusively meant reserved for Nigerians in diaspora. Ten, ten seats at the senate just for Nigerians resident abroad. This is not new. Cape Verde does it, Algeria does it, other countries in Africa they do it. That is, they just reserve some seats for their diasporans. So if we are asking for diaspora voting at the same time, we should also ask, ask for at least ten legislative seats. That is how we can have Nigerians in diaspora participating, just like the chairman said, in the politics of Nigeria, we're part of it, not like we're just at the receiving end. That is just a point that I want to make. We should fight for ten legislative seats by law. Should be, it should be entrenched in the law apart from, um, the, um, diaspora voting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a good statement to make. Uh, Chairman, what, what will you say about that? Can that be possible?
It can, well, yes, you know, we, like I, you know, I mentioned that it's one stage to another stage. The fact that we are voting, we're already showing, you know, the power of participation. But, uh, we have forgotten that Nigerians who left the country, in, in the olden days, Nigeria don't want to leave the country. You know, when you study abroad, the following day you are, you go back to Nigeria. People who left Nigeria were seen as, I will, so permit me to use the word traitors. People who could not stand the heat, so they, they check out. You know, they call it, they call it, oh, we checked out of the country. So they were looking at us as those type of people for a long time. It was later when our financial power, Mosul, started being impactful in Nigeria, that they started recognizing us as, not as traitors, but rather as influencers, a hazard of Nigerian economy. And that is why you can see that there is a difference between the old politicians and the new politicians who are now seeing all that, okay, these people are actually contributing, let us bring them in. So we are already in another state where we are sympathizer, I can call it, sympathizers of diasporas who now see that Nigerian in diaspora should participate. So I don't really doubt that in future, just like, uh, you know, honorable Frederick said, we need in future to have, you know, offices that are reserved for diasporas. Because it is then the diaspora will be seen as a, you know, maybe, so we call it the thirty-seventh state of Nigeria whereby we are representation, not only through NITCOM, but through election. Like I say, in the parliament, we have maybe two representative from, of diasporans. And that is, that will show the strength. But we will get there. I know the India, the, you know, the mentioned, there's other countries, they've already have that type of stand in their country that they will decide, the country lobby them for, 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 for support. So I think we're going to get there. That is why we need to strengthen the organization we have. Naido is organization to be strengthened so that when we talk, when we do things, Nigeria will check and we see that we are not being partisan, but we pursue the governance of that country irrespective of the party that comes in, that it is our own country that we needed to develop. And so I don't really doubt that. I think, you know, that diaspora could be taken at thirty-seven states and have representation, have a minister, have a, a senator, as, have, you know, some number in the House of Representatives as our representative of diasporas. And that will show the strength. So we'll get there. So, you know, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a work of idea.
Wow. Th- this is good. It really, there's, there's a new, a new, um, outlook. There's a new outlook among Nigerians in diaspora. And that outlook, it will bring forth good results. So, um,
If I may, if I may add one or two things quickly from my chairman's speech. Uh, I think he has spoken very well about the position of things, uh, with regards to the pursuance of diaspora voting. We are all in this thing together and we are doing all the best to ensure that, uh, joining forces with other uh, elements that have been fighting for this cause to actualize, uh, we see that that happens. Irrespective of the fact that we all know the politics that is going on, there's a huge politics going on, not only as a result of the fact that on the face value, some people say, oh, it's good that the diaspora's food. I tell you, deep down in most Nigerian politicians, they are afraid of allowing that to happen because they know the difference is going to make in their political structure and their political power structure, uh, so to say, in Nigeria. So most of them are actually making it impossible for that to happen now. But eventually, with, with enough pressure and determination, um, the diasporans and other groups will be able to bend the views of, uh, most of these people uh, in order for us to be able to achieve that, that goal. Um, secondly, I want to also state here that, uh, the diasporas have been benefiting, um, from a lot of, uh, government, uh, 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 engagement, uh, state by state. Uh, like my chairman mentioned about, uh, engaging with the thirty-six states of the Federation uh, with regards to what, uh, we can do with them in, in, in terms of the diaspora benefits. Uh, it's important to note here that, and that is the media we, and NIDO has not been really working hard with, uh, in the past uh, of which our intervention in the past has led to the structure existing in Nigeria. Today, I will say openly and clearly that there is about twenty-three out of the thirty-six states that the governors has appointed special assistants and advisors on diaspora affairs to the governor. Which means these individuals are either people who live outside the country, in US, in UK. And some of them are, uh, uh, living, uh, uh, some countries in Europe, whom their state governors has appointed them as the interface between the state government and their own state diaspora community outside Nigeria. Uh, I'm not sure, uh, because of the misconceptions of things uh, and for the fact that some of those people appointed are not known members of NIDO in any country where they come from, outside the country. And so there was, there is no link between them and, uh, uh, the NIDO structures, organizations. Uh, but I believe that in recent time, through NITCOM intervention, uh, there's this, uh, um, 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 structure NITCOM has put in place to bring together all these appointed, uh, special advisors to the governors uh, on diaspora matters, uh, to interface with NITCOM. And I believe that this need also for NIDO moving forward to find out, uh, these various appointees who also themselves are diasporans. But in many cases, uh, we end up not even interfacing with the diaspora community until they finish their terms in office in Nigeria, uh, with regards to the, uh, the, 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 the manner and the attitude in which, uh, they operate and engage, uh, with the diaspora community of their states. So I, I believe that is an opportunity now, moving forward, through what NITCOM has started, uh, for NIDO to also begin to create that enabling environment to bring together um, these special advisors to, uh, almost fifty-three governors in Nigeria today. Um, together and let the NIDO communities all over the world, wherever they come from, to know that they have somebody within, among them, that is working on their behalf, uh, with the state um, to interface between their community in the diaspora and the state government. And also, those states that are yet to appoint, about seven or eight of them, uh, need to also put pressures on their governors to do same, so that, uh, there's, uh, an equity in terms of representation of the diasporas in the states, uh, 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 in the present administration and the administrations to come in the future. So I believe that there's a lot that's going on, uh, which has not been broadcast properly for people to know and understand. And how we can do that to ensure that this, uh, appointees of the governors uh, function in the right perspective in order to carry along their diaspora communities and the state government in terms of interfacing and relationships. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. With this, I want us to bring this, uh, session to a close. We don't want to hold up our chairman. Uh, the other activities is obviously, uh, engaged in for the night, the weekend. So I, I, uh, we will bring you back again, Chairman. We, because, uh, from the YouTube session, there are questions. Uh, we'll bring you back again, hopefully, uh, maybe early next year. So with this, I say thank you all for coming to Shengen Story Media if I try town hall meeting, one-on-one with our own wonderful, very, very humble, looking at him, you can know, you can see that humility. And, uh, Honorable Samson said it, the Abraham-like spirit in him, Abraham, uh, Abraham Lincoln. So we want to thank you, Honorable, uh, Dr. Bashir Obashikola, Chairman of NIDO Europe. Our emphasis is more on the Nigerians in Europe. Uh, yes, Nigerians are scattered all over the world, but we are in Europe and we are, we, we want to harness ourselves. We want to get ourselves together, we want to cooperate more with ourselves, live more with ourselves and make progressive things with ourselves. So thank you all so much. I thank all the elders that have come from Denmark, my brothers, uh, Ruti Mi Ottenia from France, from Germany, from, uh, every corner of Europe. You're all welcome. We meet up again in the next three weeks and, uh, hope to see you there when we come with the next one-on-one personality. Thank you very much, everybody. So have a beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good night.
Good night.